I’m going to call this meeting of the City Urban Renewal Agency to order. I’ll tell you, I’m sure glad to be back here. It’s really very exciting. I think we’ll begin with a roll call.
Board Member Kesar.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Hi.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Councilor McCoy, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we don’t, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who’d like to address the Salem Urban Renewal Agency? Okay. And the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Second by Hoy. Any discussion, Councilor?
Okay, well, we’ve got several items on here tonight. First, we’ve got a resolution establishing the 2019 total requirement for the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency of $96,366,830. We’ve got transfer of real property ownership interest to the city of Salem on 11 small little parcels that are sort of leftover after different projects were completed that are being moved over from Urban Renewal to the city of Salem for sale, at which point the reimbursement district will be reimbursed for the sale. We’ve got some appointments to the North Gate Redevelopment Advisory Board and the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board, and we’ve got the lease of real property at 2640 Portland Road Northeast.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let’s see if there’s anything else here. Information reports. Do you have any information to report?
I don’t have anything to share this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions on that lack of information?
[laughter]
Okay, very good. Then the Urban Renewal Agency of Salem is adjourned.
Yeah, getting right up there.
We’re moving right on. Okay. Call to order the meeting of the Salem City Council for June 25th. If you’d please call a roll.
Councilor Kesar.
President.
Councilor Anderson.
Also.
Councilor Nanki.
Here.
Councilor McCoy.
Here.
Councilor Ossid.
Here.
Councilor Hoy.
Here.
Councilor Cook.
Here.
Councilor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay, Councilor McCoy, any additions or deletions?
I move approval of additions to the council agenda.
Second.
Second by Cook.
And those additions are 1.2A, which is a summary of actions to address the cyanotoxins in Salem’s water supply, and then there’s 7.1A, there’s an added report under the State Street Corridor Plan Project.
Very good. Okay. All those in favor of the additions and deletions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And it’s now an opportunity for the council and city manager to comment. Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome back.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to say, I had a lovely time with my family at the Walk with a Ranger Bird Walk with Just Walk Salem at Minto Brown. We got to spend some time with Park Ranger Mike, learn about some of the local flora and fauna in Minto, and it was wonderful for the family and a free event, so I would just encourage you all to attend to get to know the area. Also, we attended an event at the library and was reminded that it’s the summer reading program, Libraries Rock, so just another encouragement for kids out of school and families to participate in our well-beloved library. I also found some topics for books for my kids to be able to broach subjects of things that are taking place right now in our community and on a larger level, to be able to discuss things with smaller kids that maybe we may not, I may not be as a parent, so comfortable discussing. And I found some really good references with books, and the librarians were really helpful. And I was just reminded that whenever things become kind of a hot point politically, whenever someone’s blaming a single group of people for anything, it’s usually just a tool that people in power use to pit working people against other working people. So I would just want to extend that thought and that comment within our community, because there’s so much going right right now, and there’s so many people that support each other, to just make sure that we continue to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Cook. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back again.
Thank you very much.
This is really kind of a follow-up unintentionally to what Commissioner, excuse me, Councilor Cook says, and it relates to things that are going on in our country today. And to start with me, I would say that about a year and a half ago, Salem unanimously, the city council adopted a resolution declaring that the city of Salem is an inclusive city with many clauses such as immigrants and refugees of all nations have contributed to the health, well-being, and general welfare of the city of Salem as families and neighbors; immigrants and refugees of all nations have contributed to the prosperity of Oregon as workers and taxpayers; and every Salem resident should be treated with compassion and respect regardless of national origin or citizenship status. And we resolve that Salem is an inclusive city that embraces, celebrates, and welcomes its immigrant and refugee residents and their contribution to the collective prosperity of all residents. We resolve that the provision of services or benefits by the city of Salem shall not be conditioned upon a resident’s federal immigration status except as required by federal and state law. And I think that becomes even more important in light of what is going on at our nation and all the things that we just talked about the city of Salem doing, to me, apply to our country as well. And so next week, I will be introducing a resolution of the council, and it’s not in final form, but I’m going to read to you now what is pretty close to what I will be introducing at the next meeting. The city of Salem shares in the outrage against the zero tolerance policy toward immigrants. This policy has resulted in children being taken away from their parents and asylum seekers being treated as criminals. Despite the executive order to stop separating families, they will still be held in prison and treated as criminals, and there is no process in place for reuniting families that have already been torn apart. Salem is an inclusive city and stands in solidarity and shared anguish with our immigrant residents. The city of Salem supports the lawsuit to be filed by Oregon Attorney General Ellen Rosenbloom, jointly with other state’s attorney generals challenging the federal policy. The city of Salem also supports the decision by Governor Kate Brown to refuse to deploy the National Guard, Oregon National Guard, to the Mexican border. I will have that in writing so we can discuss it at the next meeting, and I hope we have an open and full discussion about this. Finally, I would add for the members of the public out there, this Saturday, June 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be a demonstration with the title of Families Belong Together. It will be from 11:00 to 1:00 at the World War II Memorial, just to the west of the Capitol in Salem, and I hope to see everybody there who has concerns about this policy of our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor comments? I have just a couple. I had an opportunity yesterday to attend the Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association Ice Cream Social, really well-attended, very well-done, lots of information available. The CERT, the Emergency Preparedness Group that the city has, was represented there as well as a group, a whole range of different programs. I thought it was really informative and really a delightful afternoon at about 90 degrees. Good time to be eating ice cream in the shade at Richmond School, or not Richmond, rather Bush School, I’m sorry. And I also, later that evening, had the opportunity to address in excess of 1,000 people from around the world, but certainly from across the nation, who are here for the Wally Byham Annual Get-Together. This is the third time they’ve had this convention here in Salem out at the state fairgrounds. This is ultimately going to be about 1,500 people enjoying our community, really an interesting group. I’m now an honorary member of the Wally Byham.
What is that?
That is the airstream trailer. Very interesting. It was really a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it myself. Angie from Travel Salem was there to speak as well, and we had a real good session with them to kind of extol the virtues of the community and encourage them to take advantage. If you have a chance to go out there, it’s, if you’re into trailers or into travel or just a lot of people doing good works. One of the things they do is collect money for a whole range of programs here in Salem. They’re collecting funds for Union Gospel Mission, as well as Family Building Blocks. They do a lot of work while they’re here for the community. They’ll be here until, I think Friday is their last day officially. There’ll be groups of them at the fairgrounds until Sunday. And then, just because I don’t want to, I spent a lot of time in England, and I had an opportunity to track you as you all dealt with the water issue. I want to compliment you on dealing with the issues involved. I look forward to the city manager’s discussion, and I certainly will have some questions. I’ve given each of you a copy of Sweet Mountain Water by former City Public Works Director, Frank Malden. I think one of the really important issues we’re going to face is the future of that water supply. I am particularly interested, along with hearing what city manager has to say about solutions. I am particularly interested in causation, what causes this, what is causing this in our water supply, these algal blooms, and I think this is just a great basis for that discussion, which I think we will have at some point. And I’ll be coming back to you with some recommendations on how to pursue those issues in the next couple of council meetings. I’m consulting with some statewide and national groups that are very interested in assisting us in that area of causation. So I’m real concerned about this. I know as everyone in this community is, so I look forward to that discussion. And with that, I’d like to turn it over to the city manager, and I’m looking forward to his comments this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. A quick announcement before I get into the water update. Chief Moore asked me to remind you, as you’re visiting with your neighborhood associations or as you’re communicating with your neighborhood associations, National Night Out is coming up, August 7th, and there is an opportunity for block parties. And if your neighborhood association or other groups are interested in a block party, to please contact our police department or go to the city website to sign up. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the water quality advisory and the city’s efforts to lift the advisory once and for all and for every resident and water customer. There is a staff report attached to 1.2, City Manager’s comments. I encourage you to share the report with your constituents. It’s a very thorough summary of the water issues. The report highlights the immediate actions the city has taken to respond to this first-time-ever presence of toxins above the EPA advisory levels in Salem’s drinking water. Based on the research, analysis, and testing done over the past 20 days, I am confident we have a solution. I am less confident regarding the time that will be needed for the solution to work, but I am confident that we have a solution. And in a few minutes, Brian Martin, the city engineer, will be giving you an update from the activity this weekend and from today on the powdered activated carbon. Before Brian does that, I would like to share some information with you on the advisory itself. I’ve been asked, when will the advisory be lifted? Over the weekend, we received test results indicating we have had four days of water below EPA guidelines for toxins, water that’s then safe for everyone to drink. Last week, we had a result above the vulnerable population threshold. Until that point, we had 11 straight days of great water. The second advisory has remained in place to prevent that on-again, off-again confusion. While successful in preventing that on-again, off-again confusion, I realize the advisory is having an impact on the community and the organization. Many of us, many of my coworkers, have been working and continue to work long hours providing water and information, and for that, I’m very thankful and grateful that the organization has really stepped up to meet this need. Rather than guessing, certainly tonight, rather than guessing on a specific date, I want to share with you the questions that go into the advisory decision. The first, is the powdered activated carbon up and running and providing the city with increased protection against cyanotoxins and algae? Again, Brian’s update for you this evening will provide you some of that information. Do we have enough favorable water sample results in our distribution system and treatment plant to support lifting the advisory? The toxins, certainly before the carbon, have been bouncing all over the place, and that’s been one of our challenges, is the difficulty we have in predicting when toxins might show up and where those toxins will show up. Are we able to handle any impacts that might occur resulting from the temperature control operations, the water spills at Detroit Dam? The Army Corps of Engineers was extremely cooperative with us over the first two weeks of the advisory. However, they did need to spill. They spilled on Thursday. That water is working its way down from the reservoir through our treatment plant, so we need to know what impacts, if any, have resulted from that spill. Are we confident that the algae bloom situation in Detroit Reservoir is improving and that we can handle what may develop in the short term? Every day, certainly since the powdered activated carbon work has started, staff has been evaluating these questions. If this week’s results are showing a really clean system, we can consider ending the advisory sooner than if testing shows a number of detacs going on at significant levels. If we have detacs, we would then want to consider exchanging the pre-powdered activated carbon water in the distribution system with post-powdered activated carbon water. That process could take a few days. The actual process of lifting the advisory is two steps, two stages. A technical staff recommendation for us, that is our city utility operations manager. He is under at least Oregon Health Authority regulations, if not EPA guidelines or requirements. He is the person responsible and accountable for managing the city’s water system. That’s Dwayne Barnes. I think many of you have met Dwayne. He is the person who could go to jail if the water system is not managed correctly. We need the Oregon Health Authority’s concurrence and also the concurrence of the Marion County Public Health Department. The advisory clearly has had an impact on the community. To ensure non-technical aspects are considered, the recommendation, the technical recommendation then goes to management and, as we did on Friday, two weeks ago, consultation with counselors and the mayor, to make sure we’re considering the non-technical aspects of the impacts of the advisory. So that’s what’s coming. For tonight, we have an update for you on the powdered activated carbon. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I just had a couple of questions that are general enough. I’m not sure I need to ask the engineer on this, but how many communities now, since Salem discovered this, have now found that they have this problem in their water supply? It sounds like we were first, and there’s a lineup behind us, and I want to kind of understand that.
The Oregon Health Authority has determined that there are 41, I believe, public water systems that are at risk of the algae, of the toxins. I don’t, Mr. Fernandez, do you have additional information?
Yeah, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. That’s correct. There are 41 that draw their water from reservoirs similar to us, and there could be many more. Really, any water provider that draws surface water as their source water is at risk of algae blooms and the introduction of cyanotoxins into their water system. Obviously, the next step is then how is the water treated? There are treatment schemes that remove toxins automatically, just as part of the scheme, and then there’s some that do not, although we have had, we have heard reports of some entities that use ozone, which is a well-known scheme that removes toxins, and then toxins were found in the finished water. So the science on this is still evolving.
Are we in some sort of broad consultation with these other, who’s coordinating this statewide, then? Who’s running the show on this thing?
The League of Oregon Cities has a policy committee on water utilities that we have representation in, and they have, they’re taking the lead and talking with the Senate President and have been kind of the lead group, working with the Oregon Health Authority in developing the new rules that are coming out to do the testing.
Can we see this kind of information as a city council? Will we be able to be privy to developing policies at the state level?
Well, the interim rules, I think, have been published and I think go into effect on the 29th.
I didn’t hear what you said.
Yeah, so they are, they’ll be promulgated on June 29th and will become effective July 15th, so we can certainly share that with council. Those are agency administrative rules. We have provided comments, staff comments, on the rules. Clearly, we support the rules. In fact, I was reading some of our comments before coming down, and some of our comments was, hey, you need to be stricter.
Yeah.
Not less strict, but actually more strict in what you’re proposing. So, yeah, that’s, again, that’s also emerging, and as a state agency, of course, they can promulgate their admin rules.
Two other points, if I may, on that question. We do have city staff on the LOC Committee. I believe he might be chairing the committee?
I don’t know if Jason chairs the committee.
Certainly have city representation on that committee.
That he’s on the committee. Has been for a number of years.
Also, will be bringing this issue to the council’s legislative committee for consideration of specific.
I might make a suggestion, and maybe it’s already happened and I haven’t seen it yet, that we see the city’s comments that are made on this.
Happy to.
I think that should be distributed as quickly as possible to the council, so we understand what’s going on out there in the broader community in Oregon and kind of what role we’re playing. I hope we’re playing a leadership role. It sounds like we are.
We are, Mayor. In fact, I was at a meeting with the Senate President and representatives of this committee a couple of weeks ago, and everyone is looking to, we are by default the leaders.
The canary in the mahogany.
We are the leaders, and in fact, several of the committee members expressed to me that they were glad that, with pain in their heart, they were glad that it happened in Salem, because at least that way the legislature was well-versed with the issue. And I will tell you, the Senate President has been very interested in this and very active in wanting to learn and understand what’s going on to see what can be done to help us, help all of the communities in the next session.
Okay, well, as soon as we can have that, any of that information, I would just really recommend that be made available.
We’ll get those to you.
Thank you. Any other, okay? Brian?
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bennett, city council members. I’m Brian Martin, city engineer, and I’m leading the Powder Activated Carbon, also known as PAC. You’ll hear PAC quite a bit tonight, pretreatment project at Garen Island. My goal tonight is to supplement and expand on the information provided in the staff report that you received tonight, and I’m going to start out firstly by saying I’m happy to report that our demonstration of filter implementation, which includes treating our raw water with PAC before passing it through our roughing filter, and one of our slow sand filter cells went live this morning. So in the 20 days that our city manager mentioned earlier, we already have a system that’s treating water through one of our filter cells. I’ll share more about that after I provide a little more background regarding our bench testing in the laboratory and pilot testing at Garen Island. Our sampling and testing began on June 5th when Corallo Engineering, one of our consultants working on our water system master plan, collected water samples containing algal toxins from Detroit Lake. Ju Grounds is with Corallo Engineering. He’s here behind me tonight. Those samples were sent to their laboratory in Boise, Idaho, that same day, and they began running tests using activated carbon on toxin absorption and carbon settlement. We ended up using PAC. They also looked at GAC, which is actually granular activated carbon, in their labs. These tests were important to determine the effect of activated carbon on the toxins, as well as determine optimum carbon concentration levels and contact time required to absorb the toxins from our water source. The laboratory work also included tests on cationic polymers and alum dosages to optimize the settlement of the carbon toxin particles from the water. Settlement is critical to the pretreatment process to minimize the amount of PAC passing onto our sand filters, which can plug them and reduce the amount of water that we can produce and deliver to our residents and customers. After successful laboratory testing was completed and the PAC pretreatment process was selected for use at Garen Island, the next phase of testing referred to as our pilot testing was set up at Garen Island the week of June 11th. That photo on the left there shows the mixing tanks, the settling tanks. The photo in the middle shows our filters. Those are, those are actually replica filters of our actual sand filters, and that photo on the right actually shows inside one of the filters. It’s hard to see, but there’s water and our sand filter below the water. Pilot test was installed to replicate our entire process on a larger scale with raw water from Garen Island and small-scale test filters to determine the carbon settlement rates, possible carbon impacts on our roughing filter, and the performance of our schmutzdeck bio-layer on our slow sand filters. While the laboratory studies show that powder activated carbon will absorb toxins from our water, it also absorbs other microorganisms in the water that our schmutzdeck bio-layer needs to stay healthy to treat our water system. So that schmutzdeck is actually the microorganisms in our filter that take the bad bugs out of the water. Keeping those microorganisms thriving in our schmutzdeck bio-layer is critical to our slow sand filter treatment process. We’re fortunate that previous studies on groundwater at Garen Island prove that the addition of acetic acid, which is essentially vinegar, effectively provides the carbon source that is necessary to replace the microorganism food source that PAC will remove from our raw water. So when we apply that PAC material, it’s not only taking the toxins out, it’s taking other microorganisms out that our filter needs to survive. As of this morning, our engineers and operators felt confident with the pilot test results and activated Phase 2 of the PAC implementation projects, which will pretreat approximately 10 million gallons of raw water per day with PAC and pass it through our roughing filter and one slow sand filter cell. That’s what I mentioned earlier at the start of the presentation. What I’d like to do now is walk you through that process of how water flows in, how the PAC is added, where the PAC settles, how it goes into our roughing filter, into our pumps, to the finishing filter, and then into our water transmission system. So if you kind of look at the lower right-hand corner, you’ll see the inlet. That’s the inlet to our main intake. So water comes in through that intake and goes through our intake channel. So the end of the green line there is actually our intake channel. What’s happening today is we’re taking water from that intake channel, putting it in filters three and four. That’s being used to supply the city water right now. What we’re doing with our demonstration tests is we’re using the south channel, which I’ll show in a minute, to actually take water and push it through this demonstration process. So what we’re doing is we’re adding PAC right at the start of that south channel. And white, that PAC then will mix with the waters that goes through that south channel. There’s a weir in the, I would say, the upper-left corner of that PAC mixing area. And that area, the water will flow through. We’re adding alum and polymer to the water so that we can get settling. That settling is going to happen in that yellow zone called PAC settling. So as the water goes through it, the PAC settles out, the water goes into our roughing filter. It’ll flow through our roughing filter, which will take out any of the leftover PAC, which we’re hoping is minimized, because we don’t want to plug the filter, but is there to take out any excess PAC. The water then flows into our caisson, which is where we have a pump system. The vinegar I talked about earlier, the acetic acid, our carbon addition, will be added at the pump station. The water is then going to go into Filter 1, where it will go through our sand filter to be finished. The water will flow out of Filter 1, mixed with the water that we’re currently putting in Filters 3 and 4 to become our water that’s going to be serving the city Salem. What’s not shown on this slide is further to the left is where our chlorination treatment occurs and where our soda ash treatment occurs to take care of the pH. So the goal with the Phase 2 demonstration is really to further evaluate PAC settlement with polymer and the alum in a live channel. It was one thing to use beakers and It was one thing to use beakers and test tubes in Boise, Idaho. Another thing to use barrels in our pilot system. Now, we're actually going live in part of our water treatment plant. We will be watching the turbidity levels, the roughing filter performance, and the finishing filter performance, as we expect to make some corrections to the system throughout the week before we move forward with changes this weekend for hopefully a full implementation by Monday.
On that, what's that means, what's going to happen Monday? What, what do you mean?
Yeah, so Monday is Phase 3, and it's basically putting water that has been PAC-treated into our entire system. And I have a slide that shows that.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. On the last slide, how, how long does, your previous slide, how long does this all take from when the water gets taken in at the inlet to when it's ready to be used by the citizens of Salem?
Yes, a good question. So, water, as it enters the inlet, takes about, a little, a little over an hour to follow the, the green line to where the PAC addition is added. That PAC mixing zone and PAC, PAC settling zone takes several hours. The PAC's mixing is an hour and a half to two hours. The settling is about another hour. It'll go into the roughing filter, through the slow sand filter. So, we're looking at- Maybe 12 hours? Roughly 12 hours for it to leave the plant. Then it enters the system, and depending where you're at in the water system in Salem, it's going to go through our transmission lines, get into the city. It can take up to seven to 10 days to reach the very outskirts in the northeast or the northwest. These are a few photos that I took on the weekend. That upper-left-hand photo is about 60,000 pounds of the PAC that we're going to be using. The photo in the upper-right is actually a picture of where we're adding the PAC and mixing it in that south channel. The photo in the lower-left, we were calibrating our PAC eductor to get the PAC into the water over the weekend. We put a small amount. You can see a little foamy black stuff coming out from around that mixer. And the photo in the lower-right is where we are inserting polymer and alum into the system near the weir. So, as the mayor had mentioned, what does the full-scale implementation mean? I'll walk you through it right here. So, once again, if we start at the inlet over in the lower-right-hand corner, the water will flow in. Now that we're going to be treating significantly more water, we're, we're pushing about 10 million gallons through the demonstration project. We'll be doing between 40 and 50 million gallons a day, once we go live with the full implementation. So, in order to accomplish that, we need a little bit bigger basins for, first of all, our PAC addition, which will happen very close to the inlet. That water then is going to have the PAC put in concentration with it. The intake channel is now going to be our mixing channel, so it takes a little over an hour to get, get water through that mixing channel. The, the test studies have shown that having it mixed with a contact time of about one hour is, is what was determined in the lab to take the toxins out of the water. That's what our channel provides. Once we get to that south channel, that's where we're going to add the alum and the polymer. So, if you recall, it was a little bit further down the line during our demonstration project. It's moved up closer to the intake for all of the water. The settling zone now is the entire south channel. So, that PAC will settle out. Once again, it'll go into the roughing filter, and it's the same process from there. It'll go back to our caisson to be collected. We'll add the carbon additive, which is our acetic acid, pump the water into multiple slow sand filters where the water will filter through, and it will leave into our transmission vein where it will be later treated with chlorine and soda ash to adjust the pH. I'm, I'm happy to report that almost all the materials and equipment is in place for the full PAC implementation. You know, of course, we have it all for the demonstration. We're waiting on one piece of equipment that's scheduled to arrive Thursday afternoon. That'll be the last piece we need for the full implementation. However, we also need this time this week to evaluate how it's working, get our concentration levels adjusted based on the actual hydraulics of the channels that are out there, and then evaluate how our schmutzdeck in that filter number one is performing before we move forward. The, the goal is, by the end of the week, we'll see how all that shakes out. If it looks good, we'll transition equipment. We'll have to move some things around based on the demonstration versus the final, the final plan, and we'd like to, you know, be live by Monday, July 2nd. That's our goal. And one last thing I'll leave you with here before we turn over to questions. We've been tracking our costs. You know, currently, where we're at, what we're projecting, we're still on our original budget of $2 million, which was discussed earlier before we started this process. So, I'm ready for any questions, if-
Any questions? Counselor Cook.
Did you have, thank you. Did you have to adjust the, you've mentioned the soda ash with the acetic acid. Did that have to, are you having to adjust extra for the pH with the acetic acid that's added, or?
We're, we're watching it close. So, depending on how it's working, we'll either adjust and, and adjust the pH a little bit more on the influent end, but we always have the correction by our chlorination point that's still on the island before it goes into our lines and gets distributed throughout the city.
As we put out these advisories that have been coming out, will you be keep, will, the public be kept abreast of your tracking of this process, going through that as part of that? Right now, it says, you know, if you're certain ages and different kinds of conditions, the advisory's in place. Will we also include an advisory to those of us who are drinking tap water as to what's going on with our water on a daily basis that we get from the other?
Yes, we cer, we certainly will, yes.
Good. I think that would be helpful. Would be for me.
Okay.
Counselor.
Thanks. So, I know you're doing the pilot right now, and then you're hoping to kind of go to production here, at least partially. Are we feeling confident that this is going to scale appropriately and is going to work? And kind of what's your confidence level?
Our confidence level is pretty high. We, you know, we actually started the demonstration today, so we're going through one filter. There was more flow going through that south channel than we originally thought, so we had to make some adjustments and adjust our concentrations a little bit, but we're, we're working through it. It's going to be a process, but we know with the right amount of admixtures, the polymer and the alum, there's a way to get the PAC to settle out. We know the water with the PAC is going to be better quality water than, than the water that's going through it, because it'll take those toxins out. We also know that the acetic acid has worked very well on our pilot filters. The schmutzdeck has done very well. We actually started that, that testing about a year ago, because we were trying to figure out the right way to address filter health if we added fresh water to the system out of a well. So, we have a well out there, doesn't have all the nutrients that the, the surface water does, and so if we started putting too much well water in, the schmutzdeck started to not perform so well. And so, that's where Corolo had been experimenting for the last year on how to make that process, process work. It gave us a great head start. If, if we had had that in place, this process would have taken much longer.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the length of doing all this? I mean, is this now in place for now through the foreseeable future, or if we get several weeks of, of all levels at all times below the, the danger area? Do we stop this and then do we start up again if all of a sudden up in the reservoir it, we get some toxic levels there? We had this discussion two weeks ago, or a week and a half ago, however long it was, and it was like it took several days from a toxin, cytotoxin that was discovered in the lake to actually get down to the intake. So, what are the plans for the future? And I'm really thinking through the summer, when is where this problem could arise again.
Yeah, our, our plan now is to just keep treating. So, we're going to start and keep treating, you know, with, with a delay in the testing in two days, and, you know, it's too late if we say, hey, we got a positive, let's turn it on. Well, that water may already be through the system. So, that's-
Are you noticing any problem as a function of the core spill that's underway? Nope?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah.
But you're monitoring it very closely and-
We sample every day.
Okay, and the public informed? Very good. Counselor Mankey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In that light, I know some of the original testing had non-detex at the surface. Is that still the case in, in the reservoir? I mean, if we're overflowing from the top and we're seeing non-detex for significant elevation from, from surface, then our level of concern should be possibly a little bit less.
And Lacey, if you could inform those of us who aren't as informed as Counselor Mankey, what non-detect means?
Sure, absolutely. So, my name is Lacey Goris Priest. I'm the Water Quality Supervisor for Utility Operations. Let me pull up my data for that specific location so I can give you the correct information. So, when staff is at Detroit Reservoir, specifically at the log boom, they're sampling at three locations. They're sampling at the surface water. They're sampling at spillway depth, which is approximately 22 feet below the surface water. And then they're also sampling at the pen stock, which is about 160 feet below. And so, those three levels definitely vary in the amount of detections. And so, when, when there's a, a level that's below the, the lab's confidence in reporting that, that number, we call it below detection limit. And so, that's, that's what is referenced there. All three levels do give us very, a variation in results. So, we aren't seeing the exact same thing at the surface as we are at 22 feet or at 160 feet. I think one of the things, from my perspective, that I found to be most interesting is that at the 160-foot feet, we were still getting detections. So, even at that very deep cooler water, there is toxin that is at that location as well. So, we've been paying attention to the 22-foot depth because of the recent start in spill from that depth, to see what's moving then into Big Cliff and then further downstream into, into the North Saniam River.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. So, I understand in the Army Corps letting us take samples at Big Cliff, that gives us a bit of a stoppage so we can close the gates. Can you explain what happens with our water if we have to close the gates, if there's a sample at Big Cliff that tests positive for cyanotoxins?
Absolutely. So, one of the benefits to being up in the watershed and collecting those samples is being able to have that early detection in what is observed and what is moving downstream towards our water treatment facility. If there is ever an incident, whether it be an algal toxin incident or a diesel spill upstream, whatever that incident may be, we have the opportunity to close our intake gates and not allow water from the North Saniam River into our water treatment facility to protect our filters from whatever that incident may bring, whether it's an algal toxin, or gasoline, or pesticide, whatever, whatever it could be. So, we have the ability to make operational decisions based off of that information to enhance our, our ability to manage that facility.
So, if the gate is closed, how much water can we provide with closed gates?
That's a great question. It's going to depend on the type of year. It depends on water demand. It depends on how much storage we have available to us in our finished water storage reservoirs. We also have the ability to utilize our aquifer storage and recovery wells in South Salem to help meet demand. In an instance that would require it, we could also activate our intertie with the City of Kaiser to help us meet those days where our intake would be shut. So, we, we could go for a period of, of days to, to potentially even weeks, depending on what time of year it is and what the demand is on the water system, based off of our, our own storage, our aquifer storage and recovery well system, and then our interconnection with the City of Kaiser.
Thank you. Counselor Kizer.
Thanks. I just have one more question. A couple of weeks ago, I think, when I talked with City Manager Powers and Director Fernandez, it was stated that adding the activated, or powdered-activated carbon is going to be an extremely manual process and a 24-by-7 process. Is that still the case? Could you just describe? I think, I think it's important for the public to understand that we're not set up to handle this type of treatment, so the way we're going about it is, is requiring people to be there on-site doing it. So, could you just briefly describe that?
Yeah, sure. That's, that's, that's very true. If I went back to the, I'm not sure how to go quick back to this demonstration startup, we actually don't have our good PAC injection system there yet. That's the system that's going to show up Thursday. So, E-Web gave us more of a manual system that we're using to implement this first demonstration, demonstration filter project. It's adequate, because, you know, we're going on 10 million gallons per day, which is less, but it is, it is somewhat manual. Our guys are out there this weekend trying to take the manual out of it and make it as close as they could to automate it, but it won't be what we'll have once we implement the full system, when the, when the better equipment shows up. So, we still are going to need people on-site 24/7. You know, when we start, when we start the full activation, we're, our dosage is-
25?
Yeah, yeah, up to, between 8,000, 10,000 pounds a day. The super sacks that will sit on this new equipment have about 660 pounds in them. So, you can imagine, you know, and do the math, but every hour or two, we're going to put a new super sack up. So, so it is going to be labor-intensive. It's not a, not an automated process, but it can work and we'll make it work.
When, when you say labor-intensive, I mean, I'm just kind of curious. What, what's that mean? What's that mean for the guy that's, or the woman that's handling the sack or whatever is going on? What are we asking of people right now?
Yeah, so with this demonstration filter, someone actually is going to lift a 50-pound sack.
50 pound?
A 50-pound sack.
How many per hour, or?
So, we're doing 100 pounds per hour is what our original dose, 85 to 100 pounds, so about two an hour. And so, that'll get lifted. Once we switch over to super sacks, it's used with a forklift, and the equipment that's coming is going to have a hopper. It'll be a fork, a fork, someone will be out there on a forklift lifting the PAC into the hopper. So, it'll be less manual, but there'll be someone there having to drive a forklift and get the equipment in. The other, the systems, the alum, the polymer, the acetic acid, those are, those are basically self-automated. We just have to have people there to check and make sure it's continuing to work, make sure the levels are fine, and we don't run out of something. So, I would say that's not so labor-intensive, but it needs resources there to keep an eye on things.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cook.
And the Elsa testing that was received on-site, is that able to be incorporated in current workflow, work planning, or is that requiring extra staffing for analysis?
No, that's, that's the, that's what, we'll make that work with current staffing. So, so one of the things, so we've been in a controlled chaos situation. I mean, we're implementing this, we're learning how to test, we're sampling all over the place. As we implement Phase 3 and have that working and have that underway, then, then the, the other thing that we need to start doing is we need to start learning, how do we use our ELISA testing to give us predictions? And, and as we build data, you know, we've never sampled at, at the Big Cliff pool. So, as we start to build a data set from Big Cliff and from intake, and we start, we can start to track toxins, then we'll start to learn how to best then operate. I mean, we're going to operate this all the time, but, but if we want to then, at some point, start making decisions whether to close the gate or not close the gate, or see the level of toxins and how that works, we're going to learn that over time and then develop, you know, standards of practice to, to bring all of these tools that we've acquired into, into our, into our operations. So, so we are, we are on a very, very steep learning curve right now. So, now, in, in, in a couple of years, you know, we're going to, probably this fall, we'll bring to council a recommendation for a more permanent solution to address this. We don't anticipate using powdered-activated carbon for the rest of our lives out here. This is a, a one, it's at least a two-year solution, and then there'll be a longer-term solution, which will hopefully be, will be more automated, but will require, you know, more energy, more money, more, more chemicals, as we just start to address the realities of what's going on in our, in our watershed. And then we'll do some more learning as to then what do we need to do, and what do we need to test for and when, and that kind of thing.
But we're staying inside of our current rate structure? We are not-
We are working very hard to, to be able to do all of this inside of the current, of the current rate structure, and I think we can do that.
Including this long-term solution you talked about, the longer term?
The ozone.
I'm sorry, the, the ozone, adding ozone to the, to the water, adding an ozone contact chamber at the island.
Again, inside the current rate structure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, in fact, we're already, so one of the things that we're doing within this time period is- time period is we're running financial models.
Okay.
Even as we speak to see, and at least the preliminary calculations is that we can make all this work within the current rate structure.
And we have seen that, or will be seeing that?
So you'll be seeing that as part of the Water Recharge Task Force process, and ultimately as part of the rate proposal to council in the fall.
We look forward to it. Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fernandez, I was just curious, how is staff doing? I mean, it seems like we are just taxing folks to the limit, and I'm just wondering how they're doing and how long can we keep this pace up?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for asking, Counselor, because I was looking for a way to talk about that. So Brian, Robert, Mark and I took a tour of the plant yesterday at noon. And so yesterday Sunday, there were three engineers out there, our staff, two consultants, and our treatment plant operator, Tim Sherman. And they were already there when we got there, and I assume they were there most of the day. You know, we've had people, we just went, we just cut back, but we were manning the water stations 24 hours a day. So Mark Bechtel has done a great job with his staff of just kind of expanding. So work units have adopted water stations to relieve some of the maintenance operators that had taken the front lines of that. Lacey, of course, carried this thing on her shoulders, the first part of when we first had that indicated. So, and then I also want to recognize staff from IT, staff from FIRE, staff from community development, all helping us with, from the city manager's office, all helping us with the information dissemination and the like. So I think people have done a great job. We really shine. Our staff really shines when this is going on. There hasn't been a peep of complaining from anyone. On the contrary, people are working hard, but yeah, we're tired. We're tired. So we're hopeful that we can get this implemented next week, and then only a couple of people will be tired because they're going to be out here, but everybody else can relax a little bit and just, you know, just get back to doing our everyday work. So thank you for asking. We're tired, but working hard, and everybody's chin is still up. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you very much. This has been really informative. I assume everyone's pretty much questioned out? Okay?
And please, if there are follow-up questions, we're happy to take those, and we'll continue to provide updates to council.
Yeah, and if you think of one during the meeting, just stop. We'll answer these questions. I think this is the overriding issue of the day, so we will stop if something hits you. Ah, Counselor Lewis.
Well, I didn't know when the opportunity would be to bring this up, but I'm going to take it now. Each of us in our city council mailbox last week received a Protect What Matters flyer. And, you know, this is tremendous information. I wish I could take my Pixie Dusk and put it in every single household, but I think I'm going to have to leave it up to the city on how to get these flyers out in the hands of folks so more and more people can follow what's going on in the city.
Well, maybe the Pixie Dusk is our utility bill or something like that.
I believe, Counselor Lewis, that that's part of the Salem Community Alert System, and that those alerts go out electronically when you sign up for them and opt-in.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Manager. Really appreciate the information. Look forward to further discussion on this. I'll tell you one I'd love to hear someday, is a real understanding of the risk that people are under right now. I think I've missed that along the way, as to how much water I have to drink to get sick. My wife's trying to figure that out for me. Great, thank you very much. What? I don't know what she's feeding me. Okay. Well, let's go to proclamations here. This proclamation has ambushed the votes from the most recent primary election. Those are the results from May 15, 2018, whereas a primary election was held on the 15th day of May 2018, at which candidates for certain offices were voted upon, and whereas the results of the election have been recorded in the minute record of the council, now therefore I, Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, Oregon, proclaim and declare that at said election, Chuck Bennett was duly nominated mayor, Tom Anderson was duly nominated counselor Ward Two, Jaclyn Leung, Jaclyn's here, was duly nominated counselor Ward Four, Chris Hoy was duly nominated counselor Ward Six, Jim Lewis was duly nominated counselor Ward Eight, and Jay Nakin was duly nominated municipal court judge, signed at Salem, Oregon this 25th day of June 2018. I assume there are no questions. Congratulations to all of you for signing up again. Okay. Have you done our presentations? Public comment, any public comment? Matt Starbuck.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, welcome back.
Thank you.
City Council, City Manager. I'd like to talk for a few minutes while it's...
Make it three, Matt.
Yeah, okay. I represent the AFSCME employees within the City of Salem, roughly 600 employees, and I'd like to give you a little update on some of the bargaining. And while it's exciting to be on the cutting edge of a crisis, it's also exhausting.
Yeah.
I think we could all concur with that. So I've been an employee here at the Salem, City of Salem Public Works for 10 years, and I'm also the president of the largest labor union in Salem. As you may know, our union and the City of Salem are bargaining right now. I'll try to keep this fast-paced. Our current contract expires at the end of this month, just six days from today. When we started bargaining, the union was very clear. We want to settle a fair contract quickly. We are not going to play games, stall, or make proposals that are unreasonable. Nothing we are asking for is outside of what other comparable Oregon cities already get. The crisis, the water crisis hit while we were bargaining, and another reason that we should do our best to settle a fair contract as quickly and efficiently as possible. We have members working unlimited overtime because of the water issues. We even have members switch from day shift to mandatory 12-hour graveyard shifts indefinitely, or at least until the end of the crisis. This is exhausting and difficult for our families, but we are willing to do it because we are a professional team dedicated to providing the public service the community needs. I'm trying to get you just used to this mic here.
Yeah, you're doing real well.
The city's bargaining team proposed more than 20 takebacks, mostly targeting my brothers and sisters in Public Works, ways to reduce our pay, take away time that we have earned, and more. And the city is proposing these takebacks. While we are working all the overtime we are asked to work at the time, and we are asked to work for it. It's hard to feel like a respected member of this team under these current conditions. I know that a lot of you in the city council, and I know that, I know a lot of you in the city council, it is, I'm sorry, and I don't think the city's handling of our bargaining so far truly reflects your values and the goals for the employees here. It's, currently, we feel like we're under attack, and, you know, for the last 20 years, but we do feel like we're under attack. I thank you for your time this evening. There's going to be a few other people that are going to speak also.
Well, Matt, thank you very much. I am, as you might imagine, I think we would all be concerned that you have a sense of under attack, particularly given the situation and the tremendous amount of work your members and you are providing to the community during, as you describe it, this crisis, and genuinely appreciate all the work being done. I do have a question about mandatory overtime. I want to understand what that means.
That means that some people that work in certain positions will be required to work mandatory overtime, just because there's a limited amount of people with certifications that are required to do the work.
So this isn't, you jump up and say, "Call on me"?
No, exactly.
Okay.
Although a lot of people from different sections and different departments have stepped up, and even outside the Department of Public Works, like Peter had mentioned earlier, and we, you know, it's very well appreciated all over.
Well, again, I know on behalf of the council, and I'm sure the city leadership, we cannot thank you enough for the work you're doing, and I hope we can prevail upon our leadership here to make sure that this is done as cooperatively as possible. This is just the kind of thing that causes nothing but trouble when somebody's told you're on night shift and you've got kids and families.
Yes.
So I really am sorry that's happening.
Well, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Knock.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Knock. I'm a member of the union bargaining team, and I work in the city's IT department, supporting the community development department. I've started working at the city in 2015, and I spent most of the first two years at the city, working on revising the city's website content. That experience has allowed me to work with a variety of staff in every department in the city. It also gave me a front-row seat to the development of the city's efforts to improve communications and align messaging with objectives. And it's from that perspective that I want to bring to your attention a disconnect that I see between the messaging around the city's strategic plan and the messaging that we're seeing in the bargaining proposals. You say that you value being proactive and forward-thinking, while the bargaining proposals made on your behalf eliminate employee discretion and discourage initiative. You say that you value compassion, while the bargaining proposals made on your half double the number of times that the contract tells employees they can be fired. You say that you value responsiveness, while the bargaining proposals made on your behalf specifically penalize continuous operation employees, so that they will receive less pay and less time with their families. There's a disconnect here. I also want to bring to your attention that the union came to the table ready to bargain and settle a fair contract quickly. We came prepared with data on how Salem is falling behind cities of similar size. The city's team came to get less. There's a disconnect here. I also want to point out that you've spent thousands of dollars on developing a strategic plan that says Salem is a great place to live and work. But now you've also spent thousands of dollars on a Portland attorney to tell your employees they are overpaid, they get too much paid time off, and they can be replaced. If you truly want to fulfill your vision of a city making Salem a safe and livable city, open to all, you need to change the message you're sending employees. Because those quality services you want to provide, you need employees to do that. And more than that, you need employees whose personal experience of Salem's government aligns with your mission to create a fair, equitable, and safe city. So I'm urging you to send your bargaining team to the table with a mandate to quickly settle the contract using database decisions that value and respect the people serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy, if you happen to have a written copy of your comments, if you could provide those to the city recorder.
Okay.
It'd be very helpful. Thank you. Whoa, you okay? Okay, good. You're okay?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay. No. Laura Tesler, come on down.
Is it live? Is it live?
It's working.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Laura Tesler, and I reside in Ward Two, although if I step out of my backyard, I'm in Ward Three. So they drew the line right around my backyard. So when I'm weeding my fence, I'm in Ward Three. Today, I'd like to come down and talk to you about item 31A, I think it is.
32A, Counselor.
32A. On the oaks, 32A, okay, thank you. So oak woodlands once covered almost 400,000 acres in the Willamette Valley. However, today, the Willamette Valley now has less than 5% of the estimated historical oak woodlands. The loss of oaks, particularly large diameter, open-structured trees valuable to wildlife, like the trees at the Salem Business Campus site, are of particular concern because oak trees have a slow growth rate, and they also slow restoration success. In addition, reproduction and recruitment of younger trees are poor in many areas. The largest-known oak tree found in California is eight foot in diameter and 120 feet tall. One 27-inch diameter trunk of an oak in the Salem area was found to be 251 years old. So that means that the 40-inchers that are on the Salem Business Campus site could easily be 400 years old, or older than that. So Kalapuans in the Salem area use the acorns as a staple food source, eaten raw, roasted, dried, or cooked as a mush, soup, or bread, usually after treating acorns to remove the bitter tannins, which was a very labor-intensive process. These acorns are an important food source for many native animal species, and this is a very partial list, birds such as western scrub jay, stellar jay, acorn woodpecker, chipping sparrow, Lewis's woodpecker, and mammals such as black-tailed deer and western gray squirrel. Older trees with hollow trunks and limbs provide good nesting sites for wildlife. Oregon white oak is host to six different gall-forming insects, parasites, and a mistletoe, often sought after as a seasonal decoration. Oaks also have over 100 lichen species that grow in trunks, branches, and twigs. So because of land clearing for agriculture, urban development, fire protection, and similar modern activities, Oregon white oak habitat has been lost through much of its range. Salem residents must undertake serious conservation and restoration efforts if we want to continue the aesthetic and ecological benefits that oak species provide. I am happy to say that I feel this council has taken another step, hopefully, forward towards many more in preserving this very rare, special habitat from destruction. In 2006, I sat in that seat, the counselor Tom is in right now, and we fought to protect these oaks on this site at the Salem Business Campus, and I was very, very pleased to see that these oaks are finally going to be protected and set aside and not be cut down, except for the ones that were cut down for the power line right of way, but that's a whole other discussion. So, but, good job.
All right, other discussions got to stop.
Good job. This is an "add-a-boy, add-a-girl" for all of you on council, yay. And please think about doing this some more with oak trees.
Thank you.
You've got to preserve them.
Thank you, Ms. Tesler. Counselor Cook, no? No questions?
No questions for me? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Nanki. I'm out of here.
Okay. Tim Murphy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Tim Murphy. I'm a Salem resident of 26 years, and I'm also the chief executive officer of Brideway Recovery Services, which is a mental health and chemical dependency clinic here in Salem. I'm here to speak in full support of the Sobering Center that's going to be coming before you today. Salem is the largest community in Oregon that does not offer this service to its citizens, and it's a high need that we have. Currently, when the emergency medical services or public safety officers need to support someone that is suffering from acute intoxication, there are really limited options for them. You either have to take them to the emergency room, which is not a place to be if you're intoxicated, or to jail, and that is even the less desirable place. We need a center that can help and support the people that are struggling with chemical dependency and intoxication, and that would be what the Sobering Center would do. The current proposal is for a 10-bed center that is a collaborative effort. We've been working on this for a couple of years, between Salem Health, Marion County Sheriff's Office, Salem Police, Brideway Recovery Services, and other community partners like Community Action. So there's a collaborative effort to push this forward. We're close to being able to provide the service, and we're looking forward for your full support for the Sobering Service.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for coming down. Are you aware of the second reading that we're having today on the sale of hard liquor at proposed public events in the park? Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of what you're referring to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for all the service you provide, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, and again, thank you for all the service you provide, Mr. Murphy, you and the other organizations. Here's my question.
Sure.
I saw it was eight to 10, and then when I was looking at the statistics of how many people go to the emergency room, how many people show up, it seemed to me like eight to 10 could probably be 16 to 20 or doubled. So I'm wondering if you have a view as to what would be the ideal number of beds you would like to see? And do you and the other agencies in conjunction with the city and the other partners you talked about, is there some plan in place to move toward the ideal number of beds you might want?
Yeah, I really appreciate your comment and your question. Excuse me. We've been having this conversation for quite some time. If you asked me, my ideal number would be more in the 25-bed range. And we started with those kind of proposals and looking at it, and we scaled back to what we thought we could do budget-wise at this time. And so that was starting with 10, with the idea that we would be able to expand that to 20. The problem with Sobering is there's no funding source. It's not a billable service that you can bill Medicaid for. It's not a billable service that private insurance supports. It becomes a financial obligation that the city has to absorb. And so in Houston, Texas, just did their 11-bed facility with a budget of over $1 million per year. Other facilities are similar, depending on, you can get a reduction by scale, but I think that the proposal that we're proposing here in Salem is appropriate to start. I don't think it's going to solve the problem totally.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have the physical capacity to hold 25 if you had the operational funds, or is it something you would have to expand, that your physical structure?
Yeah, it's not my physical structure that we're looking at as a community. We're actually looking at the Community Action Building they just purchased downtown, and they've carved out just a space for the 10 beds. So if we were to expand that, if the consensus is in the community that we need to expand the service, we'll probably need to look for another facility.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim. Michael Slater.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and city staff. My name is Mike Slater. I live in Ward Seven. I came down here today to say some good things about the capital improvement budget, which I thought was worth doing. First of all, I think it's really important to recognize that there's a pretty robust body of knowledge out there that says that we invest in green infrastructure, we get people out of their houses, we have both a better city, a happier community, and a more resilient community. And when I look at the capital improvement budget, I see a number of things in here that I think are moving us in the right direction. I'd like to particularly point out a couple of these. One, of course, is the downtown streetscape. I know many people were skeptical about that when that project began, but I see that that is funded. And I'd also like to point out that a vision that people have had for quite a while is funded as well, which is the plan to eventually connect Riverfront Park to Deepwood in the City Center Park and Trail Master Plan. In addition, we're making significant investments in pedestrian safety and in bike-friendly streets and bike safety. Finally, I'd also like to point out that we're making significant investments in stream bank restoration, in wetland mitigation, and I'm very pleased to say that we're putting in almost $600,000 in planting new trees to help us achieve our 22% tree canopy goal. So I think this is another atta boy, atta girl moment for the city council, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions? Cody Mars.
Hello, Mayor, Councilman? Okay. I'm not a public speaker, actually. I'm a water treatment plant operator. I'm one of the people that have been talked about quite a bit tonight. Thank you, guys. I'm one of four operators. And for my job, for the four of us, what's required is we have to have a Level III certification. We also are required five years of experience and two years of operational decision-making. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is we're, before all this crisis came about, we started fighting for wages because we did a salary study and found out that we're at least 20% underpaid. So this algae crisis has kind of solidified that our importance within the city of Salem. And we just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we are hoping that the Budget Committee for the city and the union can come together and bring up our wages to what's comparable to other cities our size. We're not asking for way up here. We just want what's fair. We're not coming in, you know, being ridiculous is what we think. I mean, we're coming in trying to bring up our wages to where they should be. There's been a lot of talk about different cities, E-Web and Portland, and a lot of these cities that are our size are funded off of water rates, and that's what we're funded off of. So we feel that there is adequate funding. Like I said, it's only four of us. Two of us are going to be on day shift, and two of us are going to be on night shift for the foreseeable future for the summer. So we would like that addressed. The second issue that I want to bring up is we're going to a 12-hour schedule, days and nights. We would like a schedule that works well. I actually just, I have a two-week-old baby, so I have a big responsibility at home. So I would like a schedule that works for us. My supervisor and the operators that were there, because I'm on leave right now, agreed upon a schedule, and that was turned down by HR. That schedule worked really well because it allows us to work two 12-hour days and then have two days off, work three days, have two off. So it kind of flipped back and forth between a few days on and off. HR did not like that schedule and proposed four straight days of 12s and then three days off. We feel like that's a bit much because, like I said, I have kids. If I go to work at 7:00 and I get home at 7:00 PM, well, actually, I get off at 7:00 PM, you know, I get home half an hour later, it's going to be very difficult to do my duties at home. So we would like the city to work with us on a schedule that works well. We're dedicated. We want to be there. We want to be doing this job because this is our job. We're water treatment plant operators. We want to be in there protecting the city, doing what's right, and we're willing to work with the city, and we just ask that the city is willing to work with us as far as the schedule.
Thank you, Cody. Counselor.
Thanks for coming down. I just had a question. We've heard about the requirements and also the pay. It was mentioned about the study of comparable cities.
Mm-hmm.
And then you also brought up the flexibility as far as being able to have variation in schedule. About, if you can give us an idea, just anecdotally, percentage-wise, being able to have that flexibility or purely as the issue of compensation, which do you think is driving more of the issue from what you're seeing?
I actually sat down and ran some numbers this afternoon. There's two schedules, there's Schedule One and Schedule Two. The initial one, I ran the numbers, we would actually work 12 hours less. We'd work 84 hours in a two-week period. And then the Schedule Two, which one the city is proposing, we would work 96 hours, so 12 more hours within that two-week period. The pay is actually less for the Schedule One. It's about $300 less because we would be working less hours. The conflict comes because there would be some overtime in the first schedule, a little bit more. There'd be 20 hours of overtime in the schedule we prefer. The schedule that the city prefers, there would be 16 hours. So it's difference of four hours between the schedule we prefer and the one that they prefer.
So the scheduling issue is a bargainable, that's being bargained at this point?
It is, yeah.
How is it being, how did you end up with the current situation, then? Was that part of what's in the existing contract?
No, it's not, and...
I mean, it sounds like an adminis, I'm going to, Matt, I'm going to have to...
In the contract, there's emergency operations that kind of preclude normal contractual scheduling.
Okay. So you're looking to supersede that? I'm just curious.
I think they would just like a little more say in their schedule.
Okay. All righty, yeah, Counselor.
So just out of curiosity, with the emergency situation, as long as the water advisory is under effect, I know that we have had different testing levels, but rather than on again, off again, we're keeping this cursory advisory in place. Are you under emergency protocol during the entire time the advisory's in place?
Potentially, up at the Treatment Island.
Matt, would you identify yourself as...
I'm sorry. Matt Starbuck asked me local, 2067 president.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Very good. No, that's okay. I should have called on you sooner. Okay, great. Cody, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Cody Wildman.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council, and everybody else that's here. My name's Cody Wildman, and I've worked for the city of Salem for almost 10 years, and I'm one of the main signmakers in the city. Yeah. And I had very little to do with the union until our current bargaining committee published a very informative brochure that made me aware of the present negotiations and the amendments that the city wanted to make to our new contract. The proposals that HR has made to our bargaining committee are very concerning to me for a number of reasons. Of course, I want to make as much money as I can and take as much time off as I can, but I don't think I'm unique in those desires. But what concerns me the most is the potential that the contract negotiations actually have for destroying relationships here at the city. So let me give you an example of what I mean. On June 4th of this month, at the height of the water restriction crisis, I received a phone call on my personal cellphone around 6:00 PM from my supervisor. Now, I was under no obligation to answer that call. I wasn't on standby. I hadn't volunteered to work any extra overtime. As a matter of fact, I had just worked a bunch of extra overtime, about a week and a half worth of it. But I knew that if my supervisor was calling me on my personal cell, he was desperate for someone to come in. So when I answered the call, it wasn't because I wanted to come into work, it wasn't because I wanted the overtime. I received plenty of that. As a matter of fact, my nieces were visiting me from Canada, and I wanted to spend time with them. They traveled a long way to do so. So when I answered the phone, the reason I did so is because of the relationship I have with my supervisor. He's been a pretty good boss, and he's about ready to retire. And when I agreed to come in to make emergency signs for the Water Distribution Centers, I did so because I didn't want my boss to look bad in front of his boss, Mark Becktell. And I know Mark Becktell, and I didn't want him to look bad in front of Peter, and I know Peter. And I didn't want him to look bad in front of Steve, and I've met Steve a few times, and he's always been very gracious and kind. And I don't want Steve to look bad in front of all you, all right, and the rest of the city. So...
That was pretty thoughtful.
Well, you're welcome. I didn't want any of them to look bad. That's why I came in. But when Cliff called me, there was a moment when a thought ran through my mind that I should tell him I'm not going to come in because of the unrealistic and impractical and insulting demands that HR was asking us to agree to in our new contract. But I didn't do that. I don't want to destroy that relationship that I have with him and these other men, and I don't want to be that type of person who threatens in order to get what I want or to make my point, and I don't want to work in an environment that fosters an us-versus-them attitude. My fear, however, is that all these things, threats, negativity, and toxic attitudes towards management are crouching at our door here at the city. And I believe much of that responsibility falls on HR and what appear to be their inconsiderate and insulting proposals. When they meet with us individually about workplace issues, they tell us that they are here for us, but when we see the offers that they put on the table for us to accept, they make it clear that they are not really for us, they are against us.
Cody, time's up, I'm afraid.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
And I just think that's bad for all of us.
Yeah. Does anyone have any, yes, Counselor?
I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little more on HR's proposal to enlighten us?
Yeah, well, Matt would be able to speak with more authority on that, but we're looking for a particular increase, 3.5% each year for the next three years, if I'm correct. And they're coming back with a 1% cost-of-living increase over the next three, 1%, 1%, and 1%. They've pulled some proposals back, but they wanted to reduce some things on overtime. I've been directly affected by how they handle some of our overtime. For example, I took a couple hours off one morning to take some family to the airport, came in, they asked me to work more overtime, so I volunteered to stay because others couldn't. Ended up working until 11:00 that night, and HR then took away some of the overtime that I worked because I'd taken time off that morning. And so some of these things are going on, and just creates a negative environment at the city. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mackenzie Farrell.
Thank you so much. My name's Mackenzie Farrell, and I live in the Morningside Neighborhood Association. I'm actually here to speak about the Hillficker Master Plan, the draft plan. And so if now's the appropriate time, I can do that, or I can wait until it's heard later in the agenda.
Yeah, now's the time.
Now's the time. Just wanted to say that we're, I'm here on behalf of the trustees of the property that's directly neighboring the park, 4540 Pringle Road, and just wanted to let you all know that we're very supportive of the draft master plan that's been put together and all the work that the neighborhood members have put forth to develop this park property. As a neighboring property, we are concerned with the right-of-way component that's included in the plan because it does directly impact our property, and just would like to see more encouragement of the further expansion of the property, of the park property, as it naturally develops versus a right-of-way being included in the draft master plan.
Okay, very good. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Oops, sorry, Counselor.
Straight in real quick, Mackenzie. The right-of-way, and in looking, there was a couple of emails that shot around from John and then Ian as well today. And the proposed street connection isn't a hard and true line, but it kind of curves through the Meyer property?
Correct.
And is that root the concern if a roadway actually went inside of the current park boundary to make that turn? Is that an issue, then?
The concern from the family's perspective around the proposed road location is around any particular road going through the property, as we have no current plans to develop it. So, you know, we are trying to preserve that piece of property and the natural habitat, which aligns very well with the draft master plan that you're going to be considering this evening around, you know, the habitat and the tree preservation and things like that. And so we have some strong concerns about the location of that road and whether or not that road should in fact be put forward. And, you know, while it's mentioned in the park master plan and it's just kind of a proposed location, we understand that it's not something that's necessarily under consideration right now, but wanted to voice our concerns about that, too.
Thanks.
Just an additional question. Would a non-vehicle path be a different option that would be entertained as far as a multi-use path or trail?
So the current draft master plan actually is encouraging a right-of-way be added to the park that connects the current park property to Hillficker Lane, that would be a non-motorized right-of-way. And our preference right now is that we already have a non-motorized access point on the other side of the park that can be quite problematic from a security and privacy standpoint. And so as the development occurs naturally with either the expansion of the park or the development of the land for housing, we'd like to see access provided in that way more naturally versus obtaining a specific non-motorized right-of-way in the near future. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? That's everyone signed up for public comment on issues in front of the city council. I'm going to take about a five-minute break. And I mean five. I know, I'm trying. I'm trying. I'm on England time here.
You're already this late. What's the five minutes?
Yeah. This is, it's noon. I'm going to, with your permission, I'm going to call up the folks who've signed up for public comment under the non-item, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Okay. Manuel Padron? Manuel Padron. Manuel, we do a three-minute, and then it's over.
Okay, I'll be real brief, sir. Thank you very much.
Let her rip.
I'd like to thank everybody for... Everybody that stuck around to listen. I'm just here, I'm preliminarily not ready, but I have been researching the water problem that you guys have, and I'm an international business consultant. So I work on an international level in botanical extraction as well as water treatment. We have a... Excuse me. We have a water treatment facility down in... A water plant down in Lake Tahoe, California, and we just won an award for the best water.
Right.
So what we've done is in the last couple of weeks, we've put together and done a couple of researches, and we've developed maybe not a solution, but a secondary preventative method that involves the community. We've allocated about a million dollars in funds to bring in a filter system for individual homes, and we have the ability to build them on a commercial level for larger restaurants and/or apartment facilities. But it's a secondary preventative method that we are prepared to do, to implement and put in. We also have 100 pallets of water ready to come in, and we also have several other agencies, water agencies, that are with us to bring in emergency water. At this time, I got five semis waiting on the outskirts of the different states. I wasn't able to schedule the delivery last week. I was trying to get with Carol McMahon to schedule a delivery. But I have approximately 200 cases of water ready to come in for an emergency. I have one gallons, one liters coming in. And then also I have a filtration system that I like to share all my experts and all my technology and all of our research with whoever's working on it, because we may have a solution for residential and/or business on a secondary measure. So if the measure doesn't work at the treatment facility, we have a residential filter that will go right in line, and we have the funds allocated to put in 200 units to begin that we will pay for.
Great. Well, Manuel, I really appreciate you coming here. You're from Seattle, correct?
Yes.
I really appreciate you coming here this evening, and I'd like to have you talk with Mark Bechtel, our person who's dealing with the water issues in the community. Mark, if you'd just raise your hand, so Manuel can see who to... There he is. That's your man to talk to, right there, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Lee Coyne. I saw Lee here earlier. Well, if Lee shows back up, we'll let him talk. Anisa Furkan. I hope they didn't think when you take a break, you got to leave. That's it, that's who signed up.
Or they signed up on the wrong sheet.
Or signed up... No, they didn't. They signed up on the right. It's about a festival, so we'll watch for them, and if they come back in, we'll bring them up. Okay, very good. Counselor McCoy. Whoop, there's Lee. Lee, you're on.
Three minutes in the garage. My three minutes of my tape started yet?
Three minutes is what you get.
Okay. Darlene Coyne was... This is word eight, I think it is. They say a picture's worth a thousand words, and they're painting pictures.
Okay.
Does this sign up a poster for becoming...
Move away from that mic. We can't really understand you. There you go.
Nelson Mandela will be, if he was still alive, turned the age of 100 on July 18th. I think Salem will be the first city in the entire state, maybe even in the country, to celebrate Nelson Mandela's birthday, will be on July 17th, over at Unitarian Universalist Church on Center Street. Every council member and visitor family are invited, it's 6:30. Is that better?
Yes.
Every council member is invited. And I'd also like to invite the mayor, the mayor is being voted to be the second owner of business after the benediction to do, read the proclamation that we're working on together, I hope that will come to pass. And the other one, we just outlined in the program. After the benediction and the proclamation, we're going to be having the three leaders of the sponsor groups give just a brief welcome. Then we're going to be having songs by a gospel singer from Portland, the Galantine Killer, and a pianist again, Lauren Cannard, also from the Portland area. We have a keynote speaker who's lived in the U.N.S.A.F.R.A., and she's going to talk about one life, was like under the Mandela regime. And we're going to have a phone and also an open house. So that's the outline of it. I can say to all something. And my time has ended, but I think I'll take questions and answers from the audience.
Okay. Counselor Anderson. Lee, I'll call on him. Counselor Anderson's going first.
Yeah. I know it's Unitarian Universalist Church, but what time?
6:30 on the 17th, which is a Tuesday. Hopefully, willing to fare with their multiple meetings.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, what I missed, Lee, was the name of the location.
The location is the Unitarian Universalist congregation. They're getting guests for free, and I'm trying to donate a picture to them, so thank you, because they might try to get something for it. The United Nations Association, Salem Chapel, which of the acting president is the prime sponsor. The secondary ones are the Argent Assembly for Black Affairs and the... What's the third one? Oh, yeah. The Social Justice Committee at the Unitarian Church. N.W.A.C.E. is also backing up on hand, and Lee Bigarera's Mano Amado is also participating in that. So it's kind of coalition building for people who are just in the rights. And Nelson Mandela being the folk hero.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Lee.
Okay. Does it look like a go on the proclamation?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, the proclamation. I'm not sure about the mayor, but the proclamation will be there.
Okay.
Okay. Got who is the other person? Let's just make sure. Anisa Furkan?
No, she...
Shadley, okay, good. Okay, Counselor McCoy.
I move the consent calendar with the following polls, 3.2A and 3.3C by Counselor Nanki.
Second. Second by Hoy.
To go through this very lengthy consent calendar. We got under resolutions, 32B, we adopt as to recommendations to adopt a resolution to initiate vacation of aviation loop southeast at the airport. 32C, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2018-19 budget and setting the business-paid parking tax for the downtown parking district. 3.2D, we're adopting resolutions 2018-30 through 2018-68, declaring a public need to acquire the city of Salem's intent to negotiate, and if necessary authorize the city attorney to commence eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of right-of-way and temporary easements for the Brown Road Northeast Corridor Improvement Project. The reason for 38 different resolutions is each different property we're having to deal with with that improvement project need their own resolution. 32E is adopting a resolution authorizing transfers of appropriations within the city budget in order to maintain compliance with Oregon budget law, and these deal with projects and monies budgeted that weren't spent in this fiscal year to move into the next fiscal year. 3.2F is adopting a resolution certifying that city of Salem provides certain enumerated municipal services to receive state shared revenues in fiscal year 2019 in order to stay in compliance with state law. 32G is adopting a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019 city of Salem budget. And we go to action items now. 33A is authorizing the city manager to execute the attached agreement for purchase and sale of real property, transferring 11 urban renewal agency-owned parcels to the city of Salem. Talked about that, the urban renewal, on the urban renewal agenda. 33B is approving the Third Amendment to the Salem Business Campus Covenants, conditions and restrictions to include the definition of traded sector use and require approval for uses other than traded sector to the covenants. 33D is authorizing the city manager to execute the lease for a city employee health clinic. 33E is adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019 through 2023, as recommended by the Budget Committee, with the addition of project 779, as presented in Attachment 2, which was, just so you know, from last week, adding $50,000 to build speed humps and bumps on the Winter Maple Neighborhood Greenway. 33F is authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program grant funds to be used for the design of a terminal apron rehabilitation project. 33G is authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Westwood Homes. 33H is appointments, is appoint and reappoint applicants listed in facts and findings sections to the city budget committee, Civil Service Commission, Community Police Review Board, Salem Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, Salem Public Art Commission, Salem Public Library Advisory Board, and Salem Urban Development Community Services and Housing Commission. And finally, 33I is authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding binding between the Mid-Middle Amit Valley Community Action Agency and the city of Salem Provide for a Sobering Center in Salem.
Excellent.
And that is your consent.
Very good.
You want me to do it again?
Any discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we are to no public hearings, special orders of business. Counselor Nanki, you have 32A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
And if I may speak to that. I sent an email in to staff as well. As many of you may know, I used to work in that business park, and so was able to see those wonderful white oaks every day, and we discussed it as a council many years ago as well. My questions were, if we're going to set a couple of parcels aside, what's the life expectancy of the white oaks? How old are they now? Are we going to plant more to keep it that way? And then a question regarding the cost per acre is like 40,000 an acre more than the Mill Creek Corporate Center. So I got good response back from staff on that, although Counselor Tesler stated that the current trees may be upwards of 400 years old, and we were looking at a life expectancy of maybe 500. And speaking with Director Fernandez, we would be managing that, which would be replanting and then looking at what to do underneath that. And if we're going to keep these and charge more for the adjacent property owners, how and what benefit do they get from leaving these as natural areas? So it was, are we going to put paths in there so that employees at break time can walk through? There's already some paths, I guess, that a neighbor has put in, and then we would develop more soft path and maybe some spots for picnic tables or whatever for... Or benches for employees to utilize as well. Is that essentially the gist of what I received back from you?
Ms. Rutherford.
Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. And that's correct. Yes, you repeated it very well.
So there was one other question that Director Fernandez and I talked about during our break here. We didn't pay anything for that. But, and from your email, the reason for that cost difference, you can just expand on?
Yes, so you're correct. We did not purchase this property. It was property that we acquired as a part of a foreclosure back in the early '80s. And then in the early 2000s, there was a decision made to make this development land for industrial development. And there's a great deal of infrastructure costs that goes along with that. This is not in an urban renewal area, so the majority of the infrastructure is being funded through the land sales and through public works resources. So because of those costs, and the goal being to cover the bulk of those costs through those land sales, it's priced at a premium. So in the Mill Creek area, where we have other tools to bring to the table to offset some of the infrastructure costs that can impact what the land cost is, what the development costs are, because we don't need... First of all, we don't own the land at Mill Creek. We're not setting the price. And, you know, the state controls that, and they're able to set it at a level that meets their development needs and costs, where we need to set this to meet our development needs and costs, which are higher here than the costs are for the state out of Mill Creek. So, you know, we've been seeing prices at Mill Creek increase. We're seeing them up at 110,000, sort of at the top of the range now, and that land is nearly gone. So that is, we are starting to see more interest in the Salem Business Center now that Mill Creek is filling up. So that's bringing that price, you know, more in line to where the market is, where for the last several years, it's been quite a ways above the market.
And it sounded like there was some confusion as trying to market properties with those trees and what a potential purchaser would not be able to.
Yes, because the way that this has been approached over the last several years is that a prospective purchaser, as a part of their development approval process, would need to then come get council approval to remove any trees for their industrial development. So with a high price and a lot of uncertainty and risk as to what they could ultimately do with the property, it has been an additional barrier for development out in that area. So by protecting the larger tracts of trees and limiting the development parcels to, you know, I think we're looking at, I don't know, like 20 to 25 trees now that might be impacted, that increases the comfort for a developer.
Excellent.
Very good. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I have no doubt that when these 400-year-old trees live out their 100-year more life, Counselor Nanki will still be on the city council.
Maybe a new employer will move in there and I'll actually be working on it.
A couple of questions. First one is, and I think I know the answer to this, and it's because you said in your memo that oak removal is allowed where it is deemed necessary for the construction of commercial or industrial facilities. And my first question was, that's not true for residential, but question. And then I see it's under the Development Code, which does not apply to residential areas. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, but in this particular case, while it is allowed by code, there's an additional hurdle of it does have to get council approval.
Right, right, because it's the white oaks. Then my next question is kind of a twofold question. One is, how were these areas selected? And the second part of that is, you said there are 28 to 25 trees that we will still have to talk about. So how many trees are there that will be protected?
So there are 114 white oaks that are on the site. There will be about 80 to 85 protected, and then, you know, 20 or so that will still be on developable parcels or in planned right-of-way. And the way that they were selected is, all the trees were assessed for their health, and then the protection was tied to protecting the largest groupings and clusters of trees because that's what has the highest value.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Counselor Nanki, 3.3C.
We'll start with staff recommendation.
Second by Hoy.
And to speak with that, we'd all received emails from the Meyers who own property adjacent to that. There was some discussion regarding the right-of-way along the north end of that property. That was discussed as well at Morningside Neighborhood Association meeting as we went through this. Actually, it's been discussed there for probably the last 20 years or so since I've been attending Morningside meetings. Morningside meetings. So I had a question, can we move that line in the master plan that swoops through the adjacent property?
What do you mean by line?
It's a potential road alignment, but it's not locked in, and if you look at the legend down in the lower left of that map, it specifies that. We used to have dots on urban renewal agency properties, which drove everybody crazy and nobody could sell their property because the city might take it someday. And since we don't have an actual alignment in the transportation plan, it seems like that's a point of contention as well when you draw a line across somebody's property that doesn't need to be there at this point in time.
Is this also the recommendation of the neighborhood group? I mean, what you're suggesting?
No, they did have conversation on it. We didn't get these emails until after the Neighborhood Association had dealt with it.
But this is the recommendation of Ms. Farrell, is that correct? Do I understand that, what we heard from the representative?
They just have concerns on right-of-way along the entirety of that property border and potential for people to be coming in from different directions to that park with a...
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. Ever related question?
Do you want to hear me on the first one?
This will tie right into it.
Okay, why don't you go ahead.
All at the same time.
Let him answer them all.
I'm just confused. I would just like to know a little bit more about how the right-of-way ties into this master plan. Is it part and parcel, or are they two separate issues?
Yeah, so if I may, Mayor, the, Counselor Nanki, are you talking about the dotted line on page three?
The red dotted line that says, here's a potential roadway.
Right. So in response to that question, then I'm going to have Rob Romanek, our Parks Planner, come up to respond to Counselor Hoy's question more specifically. But with respect to the illustration on page three, that is, that just identifies what is already in the Salem Transportation System Plan. So I don't think that this necessarily is part and parcel of the park master plan, of the property master plan, so much as it is illustrative of what is in our other plans that are already adopted by council. So whether it shows up in this graphic or not makes no difference because it's in the TSP anyway. Now, this is a dotted line, so this is not the alignment of the street. The street isn't designed, the street isn't proposed, it is simply, it's indicative of a plan to someday make that connection. So I don't think, I don't think anybody needs to get too concerned over this illustration. Now with respect to what the right-of-way means to the park master plan, then, I don't think you ever met Rob. Rob's been with us for a year, Rob?
Good evening. Yes, I'm Rob Romanek, Parks Planner with Public Works Department. I've been with the city for nine months.
Okay. And he's our Parks Planner, who's doing a great job. I don't think the council's ever met Rob, so...
Unless you've been to Morningside Neighborhood.
He's been working hard on Parks Master Plan, so then, so Rob, with response to Counselor Hoy's question.
So it is a pleasure to be here tonight. To answer that question, the proposed right-of-way that is in the master plan is for a non-vehicular connection to the park. Now with that said, in the future, it could support the projects that's in the Salem Transportation Plan. Now from the perspective of what's in the park master plan, they are totally two separate issues, and the figure that is mentioned is intent is to introduce this into the discussion of the master plan, that there is a known project in the transportation plan that affects the boundary of the park. So it is not the intention of this plan to further the advancement of that roadway, but to acquire a smaller piece of that right-of-way that would facilitate a non-vehicular connection to the park.
Yes, Counselor McCoy.
So on page three, there's basically these dotted lines on both sides of the park. There's a street coming across the sun, from Chaparral to Sunland, and then this other one's from Hillficker to whatever that is, Hill Rose. So there's two, right? Is that why the park was plotted there, because it fit right in between the two roads in the transportation plan? I mean, they got acreage all over the place. I'm just curious how we ended up with this?
Well, it would just make sense. We acquired this property years ago, so it has never been master planned. It would make sense that we would have street frontage to the park rather than doing what we used to do, which was to back up lots to the park. So that's, so it's a natural that the streets connect, but the one that's been, and Hillficker, the connection to Hillficker has been a controversial issue for an eternity. I mean, Mark's laughing behind me because when we were doing transportation planning when we first got here, this has been a bone of contention for years, you know, the need to make this connection and, you know, the controversy that some neighbors don't like the idea of making the connection. But it is in the adopted Transportation System Plan, so that's why it's shown as, yeah, there's going to be a street here somewhere, that's what the plan indicates.
So to Counselor, back to Counselor Hoy's question, whether that's there or not, really it's not affecting our vote on the park.
Correct.
Right? It's another issue to be dealt with another time.
Right. I think what we would want to indicate is that, is that, yeah, this is all acreage today, someday it will be developed, and we want to indicate in the master plan that we want the park to front on streets rather than on people's backyard so that there's just more access to it for the community.
Counselor Nanki, did you have any?
Yeah, just another question regarding the Transportation System Plan as well. And I thought during the break you had said that it doesn't have that arcing line that runs through the neighbor's property like that.
Well, there's...
To me, if I see anything that's my property and it has a swoopy line going through it and it has a potential effect by buildings and wells and...
So the way these things work, as council is well aware, if this property were ever to be developed, then the developer would know that there's a desire, there's a plan in the community to make that connection, and the developer would, we would work with the developer to say, hey, we want it this way or that way, and we would work with them at that point. If the city were ever to develop that street, then we would, you know, work with the community to lay it out. It could be this curve, it could be completely different.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why we didn't just go over and then up that other little piece that looks like it runs up to Hill Rose.
Counselor Casey.
I think it just, this is just, this pink line on page three, that is just a guess. It's really just a guess at this point.
Counselor Casey.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify that the dotted pink line on page three is in the Transportation System Plan. It's not part of the park master plan. There was nothing that we can do about it tonight.
Correct.
Okay. And then the second...
It is for illustration purposes only.
Okay, the second thing, I guess, is more of a suggestion, is because this is causing consternation among folks, perhaps it could help on this page in the legend or something to just say, this is identified in the TSP but is not part of the park master plan. I don't know, something like that, but regardless, it's not something that we can vote on or do anything about tonight.
Interesting recommendation.
Right, well, the legend already says potential street extension, and we can certainly write that. Shown for illustrative purposes only, specific alignments have not been determined. So we could certainly add, you know, it's in the TSP, you know, so we can make the light fatter. It's really just an illustration.
Counselor Anderson.
I'm changing the subject here from the roads to someplace in the master plan, there was some talk, I'm still looking at the same page. If you look to the left or to the west of the park, there's some open land there, and I believe there was some potential, Rob, for saying that could be acquired in the future, and I would guess if we're going to develop that area, it might be nice to have that two-acre, I think it was a two-acre parcel that would go from where Hillfinger Lane southeast stops to where the park picks up. Could you speak to that, please?
Yes, Counselor, it is in the master plan to potentially expand the park acreage someday in the area you described to the west. The advantage of that area is that it has a less sloping topography, so it could facilitate a sports field or some other amenity that is not feasible elsewhere.
Who owns that property now?
It is private property.
Okay, so at some point, with the term I'm very familiar with, Parks SDC funds, we might be able to buy that. Yeah, because that makes sense to me, because you're right, I think eventually the folks who've lived in the farm for a long, long time, it may not always be in their ownership, and there may be some developing there, and then this would seem to be a good piece of land to buy now, or as soon as we could.
Counselor McCoy.
So, Rob, how is the public going to access this park? Where are they getting in and out of if there's no roads in there? How do they get there?
Counselor, there's presently two public access points to the park. They are both pedestrian access points. One is at the end of Sunland Street. It's at the terminus of the street itself. And similarly, at the terminus of Hill Rose Street, you can access the park on a soft path today.
Counselor Cook.
And the classification, just to review, is Hillficker Park a neighborhood park, not a destination park? Would that change with the extra acquisition of acreage and the potential field?
The park is designated neighborhood park. With the added two acres, it would still fall into the classification of a neighborhood park.
Okay, everybody ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Very good.
Ordinance Bill number 418, an ordinance amending the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map, the Northeast Neighbor, Southeast Salem Neighborhood Plan Map, and the Salem Zoning Map for certain properties generally located on State Street between 12th Street and 25th Street. Amending the Salem Revised Code, SRC 110.025, 220.005, 702.005, 703.070, 806.010, 806.015, and SRC 900, and creating SRC Chapters 533 and 534.
Very good. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council hold a public hearing on amendments to the UDC, the Comprehensive Plan, the Comprehensive Plan Map, the Nenn-Cesna Neighborhood Plan Map, and the zoning map to adopt new zoning and a new street design for the State Street corridor.
Second. Very good. I'm really pleased to hear that one. This is one that I introduced as counselor from Ward 1. I'm really pleased to see it get this far. We'll see how far it goes from here now. I'll be really excited.
If I may speak to that briefly.
Yeah.
This, the State Street Task Force started when you were sitting here to my right and maybe before that, and it's been a long time and a long project, and there's been many views presented and discussed, and I'm sure there will be many more, and I look forward to that, and I think this is a great project as envisioned by the staff recommendation. And we'll have a public hearing on July 16th, and we'll move forward on the plan. And I want to thank staff and the neighborhood groups and everybody who worked to get the plan this far, so thank you.
Very good. Counselor Casey.
I just want to echo comments from Counselor Anderson. I'm really looking forward to the public hearing for this. This has kind of been a long time coming, it seems. I think this project is going to revitalize a core area of our city, and I'm really excited by it, so I'm looking forward to the hearing.
Very excited, too. My grandmother had a dress shop on State Street inside this thing about 100 years ago, which is, it makes it, to me, real personal. I'm real interested in this. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, we had a kind of a differing opinion from the Planning Commission regarding one-laning, two-laning. Just curious how we're going to notify the public, because I think you would get a lot of people if you said, we're going to take one of these lanes away, through some kind of signage to let them know there's a public hearing taking place. It would be nice to make people aware of what may happen, because then we always get beat up at the end after we do something, and it's like, no, the decision was made two years ago and nobody showed up.
Yeah.
Yes, certainly. Norman Wright, Community Development Director, we have our standard notification process that we use for all of these public hearings, of course, but we will also be working through our neighborhood liaison to make sure that all neighborhood associations are fully aware and that they can help us to further distribute word to everyone in the surrounding areas. We will also send notification for any sort of planning effort like this to practically all the neighborhood associations. So again, we'll be relying on not only the required processes and advertisements that are part of the public process, but also the neighborhood liaison, the neighborhood associations, to help us also get the word out.
If I may...
I want to add one to your list. I really would recommend you get this also to Marion County Commissioners, let them know about it. They've just been following this. I hear from them constantly about this issue, so if you'd let them know, too.
Just as a follow-up, the commuters that use that road will be impacted greatly, potentially. And I would say during the course of a day, out of the probably 5,000 vehicle trip, maybe eight of them are neighborhood association people. So...
Some sort of posting would not hurt a bit on State Street.
Something to let the commuters know, because we notify neighborhood association people all the time, they know about this already, and they'll see it at their meeting, but the vast majority of the people that use that road will have no notice.
Thank you.
So this will just be a really good hearing.
Well, if I may, on that point, this is, I want to make sure, councilors and the public that's watching, this is going to be on a third Monday. In order to accommodate councilor's schedules, this is going to be on a third Monday. It's going to be a special meeting of council on a third Monday. It will not be a work session, it will be a special...
And it'll be on this issue exclusively.
And it'll be on this issue exclusively.
Go. Excellent.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next.
Ordinance Bill number 1418, an ordinance declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 1338 and 1340 Wallace Road Northwest and Land East annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map designation, prescribing zoning, and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Counselor Casey.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Don't have very many comments, other than I read through it, and it's got the, I forget what it's called, triple-majority petitioner-initiated annexation, so it seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill number 1318, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 6719 Devon Avenue Southeast annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
And much like Counselor Casey said, we discussed this at the last meeting. This is up on top of the hill, it's moving the folks in to the city as required if they want to develop, so I urge a yes vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Second readings, please, 72A.
Ordinance Bill number 1018, an ordinance granting a right-of-way use agreement to Extranet Systems, Inc., for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way. Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Casey.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett. Stepped away. We'll move to the next one. Ordinance Bill number 1118, an ordinance relating to changing the name of the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, amending SRC 8.010, 97.010, and 97.900. Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Casey.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes.
And the last one, Ordinance Bill number 918, an ordinance relating to possession of alcoholic beverages in parks, amending Salem Revised Code 94, Chapter 94.195, and declaring an emergency. Counselor Casey.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
No.
Counselor Cook.
No.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion passes. Okay, is there anyone else with public comment? Very good, then we are adjourned.